For joining us, I'm going to welcome you to the board's annual town meeting preview meeting of February 27th, 2021. And thank all of you for being here this morning. We had a little bit of technical difficulty, but I think we're on track right now. So, welcome. Let me just begin by saying that I'll ask the chair to please call the roll call for the select board of the clerk.
Ms. Escobedo.
Present.
Ms. Hotchkiss. Mr. Johnson.
Present.
Ms. Ackerman.
Present.
Myself, Ms. Bates, present. And Ms. Hotchkiss. Okay.
Susan, I don't see her yet.
Okay, perhaps she'll be joining us shortly. Everyone for being here. As you know, we've got a tight agenda this morning with a number of presentations. I just want to remind everybody that this is intended to be an introduction to the anticipated warrant articles and not necessarily the time for in-depth debate. There will be opportunities for questions after each of the presenters have covered the warrants in their section of presentation. And that will happen via the Q and A function at the bottom of your screen. Chris Carmody and Jerry Romanel are here today to assist in that process. And when you're called on to ask your question, we'll just ask that you state your name and address before providing your question, asking for clarification on any of the concepts or specific wording. Let me also say that there will be additional opportunity for questions via public comment at the end of this meeting. This meeting is being recorded and the questions will also be part of the public record. So I would now call on the clerk to open the warrant.
Move to open the annual town meeting warrant on February 27th, 2021, at 9:05 a.m. And close the warrant on March 26th, 2021, at 4:00 p.m.
Thank you. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Escobedo.
Aye.
Ms. Ackerman.
Aye.
Mr. Johnson.
Aye.
Ms. Hotchkiss. And myself, Ms. Bates, aye.
Okay. That was four members as recorded of our five-member select board team and the chair so declares. So, thank you. I want to also acknowledge Erin Stevens, who will be helping all of the presenters through their slide presentations today. And with that, I would ask Erin if she could put the first slide up.
Linda, that'll be me. I'll show it right now.
Okay, thank you, Chris. So, Chris, just so you know, we're not seeing it yet.
Sorry, I'm pulling it up now.
Okay, thank you.
Linda, a convenient moment, if I could have a word as well. Thanks.
You are on the agenda. So, did you want to speak prior to that?
Nope.
Okay, good. So let me just say why Chris is working on pulling that up. What the slides are going to show is, as a result, as you recall, as a result of the pandemic last year, there was a change in the format that the town manager, town moderator walked us through. Here we go. Thank you. And there were a number of articles that were postponed indefinitely. And there was all, and so what we're trying to show this morning is what the anticipated disposition is of the warrant articles that are carried over from last year. So, okay. These have been indefinitely postponed. Let me see here if I can. Okay, all three of these motions are anticipated with action on this year's warrant article. I think we can go on. Okay, and these either have all been indefinitely postponed, either because no action has occurred and you can see the categories and explanations there. Or there are other actions that have already been taken by units in town to affect what was intended from these original articles. Okay, the next slide. And the, these articles are either going to be referred back for further study. Or the original petition, in one case, the original petition has asked that it not be considered this year, given the, again, the format of our town meeting. And the Article 49 will be on the select board's discussion Monday to determine where we are on that one. All right, thank you. So let me also say that over the past three years, there have been a number of articles that were sent to the state legislature as home rule petitions. And there are, there is a timeline associated with that, and perhaps the town moderator is going to speak to that in more detail. But what I wanted to point out is that the select board and the town manager, we have actively over the last two years work with our legislative representatives, either monitoring these home rule petitions that were already in play, providing testimony along with committees, also providing testimony in some cases, and meeting with our legislative representatives to ensure that they are refiled for every new calendar year for the state legislature. And that has just been recently done. Let me just quickly review what those articles are that are currently in play that we've been following. One is from three years ago, which was the town meeting voted to send to the state legislature requests for 17-year-olds to be involved in our local town elections and town, town meeting. The other two of them were related to a transfer fee surcharge and affordable housing fee charge to fund affordable housing. Another one was the senior means tested tax exemption. And the last one was additional alcohol licenses. We have been assured that, and that all of these have already either been refiled in some cases or will be refiled shortly so that they are still actively in play. So I just wanted to bring everybody up to date on that. So I think with that, we're ready to move on to some words from our town moderator Carmen Reese, who so aptly walks us through all of this in preparation for town meeting. Thank you, Carmen.
Thank you, Linda. I just wanted to note that the town meeting is scheduled for Sunday, June 13. The lights at the end of the tunnel here with respect to COVID, but we have not yet emerged, and I do not expect we will have fully emerged by June 13. So that means we will again expect our venue to be outdoors at the Doug White Soccer Field. And we will do our level best to conclude the meeting in a single sitting on that Sunday afternoon. In order to be able to do that, we'll use some of the measures that we did last year to condense and expedite the meeting, including a robust use of the consent calendar. And I think that we can expect that, again, we will not have formal presentations on the articles, on the motions under the articles at the meeting, but that we will have narratives in a town meeting materials book, and that we will be inviting voters, urging voters to watch the hearings or attend the hearings virtually to learn about the articles more in depth before they come to town meeting. So I would encourage everyone who will be moving an article and making a presentation on it at the hearings to bear that in mind, that the presentation that you make at the hearings is very likely to be the presentation that voters will see on your article for their vote on town meeting. And you'll have a narrative in addition, just a one-page narrative in the town meeting materials. The hearings are scheduled from April 27th through May 13th, so we have plenty of time for everybody to get ready for those. And you can always find me at moderator@conqueredma.gov so that if you have questions or observations, requests, by all means, please be in touch. And we will be, as we go through the town meeting calendar, we'll provide you information with the deadlines for submitting warrant article language, submitting motions, submitting narratives, submitting PowerPoint presentations for the hearings and so on. We'll keep everyone abreast of what those deadlines are. So, thank you very much, and over to you, Linda.
All right, thank you. We are going to move right along to the finance committee's report. Mary Hartman, good morning.
Hi, thanks, Linda. Hi, everyone. I'm here on behalf of the finance committee, and I'm going to give two brief presentations about the guideline process. The guideline process is the process that the finance committee works with the town and the schools to develop the budgets that are presented to, to the townspeople at town meetings. So it's, today, we're going to talk first of all about an article that I am going to move on the floor of town meeting on behalf of the finance committee to change some of the ways that the process works. So, Chris, can we, can you pull up the presentation for me, please?
Yes.
Thank you. So the guideline process started by an article that was passed in the 1976 annual town meeting. If you want to go back one slide, please. So, the guideline process started again in 1976, and it was basically outlined how we would establish and publish budget guidelines. Next slide, please. Article four basically says that we will establish a guideline for the board of selectmen. The schools will publish that guideline in the local press and will do so on a specific date, November 30. Next slide, please. We're proposing a change to that article because we want to, first of all, we want to make the date, instead of being established date November 30, we want to make the date relative to the close of the warrant. We ran into a problem last year because town meeting was so late. We wanted to be able to have the, establishing the guideline relative to when we were actually going to have town meeting and back up to the warrant, as opposed to establishing it way back in November. It's very hard to establish a budget in November when town meeting doesn't occur until June of this year and September of last year. So that's the biggest change we're making. And we're also changing some other things as far as where we'll publish it. And whether it's a single guideline or a multiple guideline. So actually, next slide, Chris, will actually outline the substantive changes. The first change will be the data publishing, as I said. So now, instead of being a fixed date, it's relative to the close of the warrant. The word guideline is now plural, since in fact, we do publish or we can publish different guidelines for the town versus the elementary school versus the high school. The guideline now will be posted on the town's website instead of in the paper. That doesn't preclude, it can still be published in the paper, but it will, by, according to this article, it will be definitely posted on the town website. And then finally, the other change is we changed the word selectmen to select board, which is arguably the most important change. So this is our article. I think it's non-controversial. I hope that it's part of the consent calendar, but again, that's up to the, to the people in town. Are there any questions about that? Great, okay. I will move on now to giving everyone a brief update or a snapshot on where we are relative to the guideline process this year. Because right now, we're working on the FY22 budget, so I'm going to take a few minutes of your time to tell you where we are relative to that. So, Chris, can you pull up the next slide deck, please? Thank you. Okay, next, next slide. Okay, the guideline process. Want to give everybody an idea of what this process is. The guideline process is really only looking at operating budgets for the schools and the town. We're not looking at debt, we're not looking at excluded debt, and we're not looking at fixed costs, but we're looking at the operating budgets, which account for 80% of the total budget that's approved at town meeting. So even though it's only operating, it's still a large chunk of our final budget. And it is the most direct and consistent way that the finance committee influences property tax increases. Next slide, please. The process itself is the finance committee looks at both external and internal factors when we establish this guideline. External factors we look at are things like the sustainable growth rate, which is a proxy for expected inflation. We look at regional wage growth, so we want to make sure that our wages for our town employees are competitive with what people are earning in the region. We look at communities, our peer communities, and what their tax growth is. And we look at local unemployment statistics, and we look at other things too, but we're looking externally. We also then focus internally. We look at what are some other revenue sources that are available besides guideline spending, things like state aid and local receipts. And I'll say that this year, we were worried at first that state aid would come in lower than it had been coming in. And in fact, it's actually a little bit more this year. Local receipts, we're still having a problem with local receipts. They're coming in, as you would expect, local receipts, things like meals, tax, and are coming in lower than they had been in previous years. So this is, this is putting a little bit of pressure on our budget. The other internal factor we looked at are fixed costs. What are some other costs that are going to burden taxpayers, things like debt service, health insurance, and retirement benefits? And other cost drivers, collective bargaining agreements, as you know, a big part of our budget is labor costs and collective bargaining agreements have a big impact on that. We look at school enrollments, et cetera. So we look at both external, internal factors, and next slide, please, Chris. The other considerations we have is our, our levy capacity. And briefly, what that means is we can raise taxes up to a certain point without triggering an override. So we're always careful to make sure that we, we try to stay below that levy capacity so that we don't trigger an override. So we're always looking at how much headroom do we have before we bump up against an override situation? We also look at what are some future tax increases that we might have for large capital projects? We all know we've got the middle school on the horizon, and so we're mindful of that, how, you know, what will that do to property taxes? We look at new growth, because new growth is an opportunity for new sources of property taxes. And the bottom line is, we're looking at what is the impact to our property tax bills? So, putting this all together. Chris, can I have the next slide, please? This is where we are so far this year. There are a lot of numbers on this slide, so I'm going to slow down for a minute and just look at what I'm trying to show you here. The columns represent the years. We've got FY20, FY21, FY22 guideline. This is what the finance committee just voted on as far as what we think is a reasonable guideline for growth and spending. The next column is what the current budget requests are. This is what the town and the schools are requesting so far. And the final column is the difference. If you look at the rows, we've got the town, elementary school, high school, to get our total. And then the bottom line is the tax impact. So what are some of the takeaways from this? If you look at the tax impact in FY20, it was 2.33, FY21, 2.22, very reasonable. FY22 guideline, we're, we're putting a guideline out at a 2.5% property tax increase. That still enables a growth in spending, and it doesn't, it enables some, some small growth in services. As you can see, the current budgets are slightly over what our guideline is. And with the current budgets right now would result in a 2.8% property tax increase. And it's about $100,000 for each of the budgeting entities or 0.3% of a tax increase. We're hope, we're still early in the process, and we're hopeful that before the warrant closes, or certainly before town meeting, those small gaps will be closed and we'll be coming to you with budgets that are in line with, with our guideline. That's all I have. If there are any questions, be happy to entertain them.
So if anybody from the public has a question, if you could use the raise hand feature at the bottom of your screen, and we will go ahead and call you. All right. Yeah. Stephen Bader, I'm going to go ahead and promote you to panelist, and you'll be the last question. If you just want to say your name and your address, please.
Stefan Bader, Seven River Street. Just to clarify, those guidelines are just the operating budget that was not necessarily the tax impact for the last two years because of other debt factors. Is that correct?
Exactly.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Linda.
Sorry, Linda, you're muted.
Hey, thank you, Mary. I think we're now ready to move on to the town manager's presentation.
So, good morning, everyone. I will, Carrie LaFleur had a family obligation this morning, so unfortunately, that means you're stuck with just me. So I just have a few budget slides that I want to go through that reflects in large part the information that Mary just so efficiently presented. And so I'll run through those, and I know this was mentioned at the beginning, but this is a preview. And like, you know, a movie, the preview doesn't show you, you know, all the parts or how it ends, especially if it's a scary movie. And we certainly had our share of suspense this year, so we are continuing to work through these numbers and expect to have a balanced budget that is I think that will conform to the guidelines for town meeting, for the town meeting warrant. So, Chris, go ahead. So I, this is at the development timeline. As you can see, even with the modified schedules for our annual town meeting, you recall that the FY21 budget was approved in September. In November, we started working on capital. Excuse me. And then in December, the operating budget. So really, budgeting and capital planning are really year-round activities for town departments. And, you know, there's a lot of work involved in it. A lot of time spent both by department staffs and the senior management team, but especially the finance department and, and certainly the CFO. And I spend a great deal of time kind of going through the requests and setting, you know, targets and goals and strategies for how to be able to meet the finance committee's guidelines and get that budget balanced for the warrant. So this just shows you the blue and the red hour, show you where we are today and where the preliminary, when the preliminary plans are going to be issued. And we'll be presenting the town manager's budget on March 15th to the select board. Sorry. So every year, there are drivers that impact the budget preparation process. And even in non-pandemic years, there are things that come up that are unique for that year that impact, you know, that we cast our view on how we're preparing it. This year is no different, but certainly the impacts of COVID-19 and the pandemic are still very prevalent. As the moderator mentioned, we're, you know, we're starting to get the sense that maybe we'll be coming out of this. Sorry, hold on a second. Excuse me, so the, and we had that sense as well. And so one of the challenges we've had this year is planning for a budget that is going to begin the fiscal year, likely still in a pandemic, but end the fiscal year, hopefully not in a pandemic. And that, and with the expectation to return to full services as opposed to operating in the somewhat constricted mode that we've been operating in. And so as we sit here today, the budget, as it really earns on the side of constricted operations and continuing to try and do, you know, the basics without having to increase taxes significantly, because we are still in pandemic. So, a couple of things that are driving it this year, the first category is really related to pandemic. There are temporary impacts to the budget, some of the economic vitality efforts that we've done to support local businesses. There's, you know, there's, there's things we've had to do to facilitate remote meetings. Many of you have heard me say this many times, we did no business on Zoom for 300 years, and now we do it every day. That involves a lot of licensing and, you know, there's a lot of staff time involved in supporting boards and committees. And that does have a cost to the town, and then permanent impacts, you know, we've had to completely change our, our management strategy and approach to custodial services for town buildings. That's something that really, that really wasn't planned. We did have custodial services, but most of it was contracted. And now we have a mix of both in-house and contracted custodians. And then there are costs to facilitate town employees working remotely, which they have done every day since the pandemic began. And a lot of that is some equipment upgrades and licensing and things like that. The next category is, is category two. We're calling it here cybersecurity, and certainly cybersecurity is another thing that we have to pay attention to relentlessly. But that really is a catch-all for a number of IT improvements. The biggest one and the most costly, which you'll see reflected in the operating budget, is a conversion from Office 360, from, you know, onsite servers for email, for Outlook and email exchange to Office 365, which is a cloud-based system. It's a big change in something we, again, something we had thought maybe in the future we would do, but the pandemic and the need to have remote work, as well as improve our security, were really pushed out to the top of the, of the list. And then there are planned increase in service levels. You know, I think the budget director from, from, from me, he's told the departments to fully fund obligations, meaning contractual obligations, labor, you know, wage obligations, but then to level fund discretionary services and expenses and not level service, level funds, so the same amount from last year. And if there was a need for additional funding, for whatever reason, that had to be a separate request. Well, there were things that were, that were planned and began before the pandemic that are still moving forward. The most notable is library expansion project, and so that's going to require an adjustment to the operating budget to meet the needs of that new additional space. And that project's going very well. If you haven't been by the library, it's, it's really coming along nicely. We've, we've had plans, growth in the facilities division, as I talked about a little bit before, that growth has been accelerated because of some of the things that we've learned during COVID-19. We are building an economic vitality department, and that, that, that was really a goal. We are building an economic vitality department, and that, that, that was really a goal, love and vision conquered, and we've embraced that certainly through the pandemic, but also going forward. And then we are increasing legal expenses once again for the FY twenty two budget. And then there are new service level requests, increased hours for Rangers last summer. You know, we didn't plan, I, I didn't plan very well for that, and so we, we saw that a lack of Rangers can really be disruptive to some of our. Treasure open spaces that are widely used. And there are some, there's additional time requested for our regional housing services office. And some structural changes at the public works department, and then the last is, of course, kind of the fixed costs contractual and inflationary increases, salaries, utilities. Pension commitments, health insurance, things like that. So this is how the budget drivers break down. You can see that the categories I just went through are shown in terms of what share they are in the pie chart to the bottom right. And then you can see the breakdown in, in the table. Under budget drivers, and the big, the big ones that kind of jump off the page here are. Unclassified and the big ticket item in that is about seven hundred thousand dollars, are what we do, what we call our salary reserve, which is where we fund. Projected wage increases. And so last year, we, to, because we had to reduce our FY twenty one budget. To reflect the impacts of the pandemic. We reduced the salary reserve appropriation significantly, but now that we're heading back towards, we think. Normal quote unquote operations, we, we fully funded the salary reserve request, and then the other one is general governments and. A lot of that is, is new expense related to some of the IT upgrades that I just mentioned, the biggest, a big ticket item there is. Annual licensing for Office three sixty five, and then like I said, some of that is moving. Our tourism function from rec revolving funds into a general funded economic vitality department. Next slide, Chris, okay, thanks. So this was the preliminary guideline, Mary did a nice job going through this, so I don't really need to spend a lot of time here. But this just shows you where we came from, the one thing I do want to comment on is. The guideline, the increase in the guideline is built off of the reduced FY twenty one budget, which you can see. Even, even meeting the guideline, which we do plan to do. Puts us at around actually slightly less than. The final FY twenty budget, so really that's two budget cycles ago, we're back to there. Even meeting the guy, even with the guidelines that we're doing, because the guideline was really built on a reduced FY twenty one budget. But like I said, we're still in it, and so we expect to. Have constricted operations and reduced, let's say reduced service levels, but just the COVID model of service providing. For, you know, a good part of the year. Excellent, okay, thanks. So we did ask for some consideration because we were, we were coming off of a reduced budget. We let, we asked for some consideration from, from the finance committee to increase the guideline, the, the formula based guideline. And that was related to COVID expenses, you know, the categories we just went through. And, you know, some loss in revenue, especially the parking, we, we've kept the meters off. In our business districts, and it's, that's been a great benefit to the businesses, but we do have some. Expense obligations that come out of our parking meter funds. And typically, in a typical year, that generates several hundred thousand dollars in revenue, so we need to offset that. And, you know, like I said, the, the considerations for our cybersecurity and other IT issues. So in doing that, as Mary noted, we did, they did, they did increase the guideline to help us meet that number, but. As she noted, we are still, the requests are over, although, as you, I think, could see, if you go to the next slide, Chris. As you can see, we're really close and we fully expect to be able to meet the guideline. By the end of the budget process. Which means we need to. Make some further reductions to the requests, you can see here in the, on the column, the gray column all the way on the left. There isn't a breakdown for personnel expense, capital outlay or reserve fund. The number that, you know, the guideline number, the final guideline number of twenty eight million nine hundred sixty two thousand eight hundred ninety four. Is the number we know we need to hit, and so as we work through the budget process, that breakdown of personnel expense capital will be. There'll be adjustments made, so it all adds up to that bottom line number. And there's some notes here at the bottom that, you know, that talk about the need to cut about a million dollars, as Mary said. And, you know, last year, when I gave this presentation at the. On the original FY twenty one budget, we talked a lot about attrition. And I said at the time, attrition is not an annual thing, it gets less and less as people, you, even when you. When you bring on a new person at a lower wage rate than the person who left or retired. That their, their wages do grow over time, as do the wages of the organization. And so attrition savings is still less this year than it was in previous years, and so. Those, like I said, those, that was one of the big attrition, quite frankly, is one of the big reasons we were able to reduce the FY twenty one budget and still, and not have to cut services. Which was kind of a. A fortunate circumstance to be in, but again, not, not guaranteed every year. So to close the gap, we are looking at a few different things, there is the potential for federal aid, I think the House just voted. On a one point nine trillion dollar aid package, we are not budgeting for that, you know, Carrie and I agree that we, we don't, we don't budget on maybe funds. If they come in, it's great, it'll help out a lot, and we can look at offsetting. You know, offsetting taxes or offsetting, you know, revenue generators, or we can expand services that may be needed to help continue pandemic response. But it's not built into our budget, excuse me. And the other thing is, we don't, we generally, we don't spend one time money on annually recurring costs, and so. This money would be one time, there may be some exceptions to that, like, like equipment purchases that would normally, that are not. At the cat level of capital, but would normally be purchased. In the operating budget, that may be something we would look at with the aid money, because it's a purchase of a thing, it's not wages or benefits or something like that. We have, we, we look to be hitting the end of the fiscal year with some. Level of unappropriated, or excuse me, unspent appropriation. And we may be looking for a vote to transfer that into the new fiscal year, or look at it as free cash allocations again for. One time expenditures. So the, you know, bottom line is the bottom line, not, not all requests can be funded. You'll see in the capital presentation that Kate's about to give that we're basically level funding. With, with a little bit of rounding up, we're level funding the capital, the cash capital, the capital outlay program. And once again, we are planning for wages. You know, inflation on, on town employee wages that is certainly less than, I'll call them normal years. But at, at a lower amount, certainly pre pandemic, but also at a lower amount than I think. You know, we'd like to stay, because, you know, we have, it's been two budget cycles now, but. This is what we, you know, it's important to make sure that we continue to be fiscally conservative as we. Bring this towards to the town meeting. I think that's it, is that another slide, yeah, thanks.
Thank you very much. So Kate Hodges, our deputy town manager is also here to present, good morning, Kate.
Morning, everyone, it's nice to see everyone. Chris, do you have the, the slides for the capital? Thank you. Are you all set, Chris? Can you put it into like presentation mode or whatever?
Sorry, can you see that?
Yeah, but it's like the full thing, so if you can just hit the little thing at the top, so it's presentation mode.
Okay, hold on.
Thank you.
How about that?
It's perfect, thank you. So as we've been talking about, this year is a little different. And that's for many reasons, not the least of which is budgeting, but in years past, by this time that we had presented something at this particular meeting. We had nearly completed the town manager's draft budget plans, and we're discussing. At least in terms of capital projects, which we were sure were going to happen, or ongoing phases of multiyear projects. So this year's capital overview is far from a finalized version. However, we felt that it was important to inform the select board and finance committee and members of the public about the decisions regarding capital that are before us as we navigate. And try to better understand the longer lasting impacts of the pandemic. So the slides that we'll discuss with you this morning focus really on the requests for capital monies, both in debt authorization and cash capital. Or what we're calling the capital outlay. And the amounts seen today represent projects and initiatives which could possibly be recommended. If the maximum allowed to be spent under the debt policy was to be fully committed. Historically, at least for the past several years, including last year, we committed the full. Allowable amount for borrowing projects, and then, of course, we reduced that with the. The updated COVID budget that was presented in September. It's unclear at this time, given the state of things, if we would recommend. The more truncated budget for FY twenty two. Although we anticipate it'll be more in line with the revised, excuse me, the revised budget that you saw in September. So please accept this as a first iteration and by no means a commitment. Next slide, please. So these next two slides have a lot of numbers on them, and they simply are to show the actual requests, which have come in from the individual departments. The blue column all the way on the left depicts the updated amounts agreed to at the rescheduled September town meeting in the updated budget. They are the current fiscal year amounts. It's worth reminding those in attendance that at the FY twenty one budget that was voted upon in September. Was revised due to the pandemic and the initial debt authorization for FY twenty one was four million three hundred and fifty thousand. But the revised amount reduced projects by about one point six two five million, or about thirty seven percent. So that resulted in the deferrals of several emergency vehicle purchases and necessary building and road work. And so we have to take those things into consideration when trying to move forward. So the fiscal year twenty two draft request. Adds back in some of those deferred projects, and it also focuses on the longer term projects. Which are just beyond the initial stages, so meaning we're looking at funding, you know, phase two of three or phase three of four. To ensure that projects that were pre pandemic are moving forward. Next slide, please. So a good example of the phasing approach is best represented with the Department of Planning and Land Management, the Warner's Pond dredging project. Has been on the town's capital plan for seven years. And through a phased and incremental financing process, that particular project would now be ready for execution this coming year FY twenty two. Having used previous years of funding for study feasibility design efforts. We're now ready to have the, the larger amount come in, in the actual dredging to, to take place. Similar approach was taken in regard to the Juro property, which of course was funded last year at town meeting and is, I'm happy to report. Currently out to bid with more than forty companies to date who have pulled. The specs for that, so given the fact that there are more requests than we have resources for. We need to really, you know, kind of look at things. Next slide, please. Like I said, due to the pandemic, a more conservative approach to capital spending is likely to be taken, and so it's important. I think to just talk about the process that we will be going through as a town team. Excuse me, and then bringing forward to the select board and finance committee. Funding requests and projects are split into two categories, emergency needs and those projects which are ongoing or shovel ready, under the do it now category. They'll receive, likely receive priority funding, and we plan to ask department heads. To explore the impacts of delaying or deferring the projects that were. Ones that are not yet started, or something that was listed as perhaps desirable or a one time purchase, but not necessarily urgent. Next slide, please. So in light of that, we preliminarily placed each of the projects that were in the first couple of slides for debt into the above categories based on the information that we have at this time. So our first priority, as I said, are those urgent needs which surround health and safety, failing or failed building or facility systems. And the replacement of non sustainable or non operational vehicles, and those include upgrades to the HVAC system at one forty one Kai's Road. The Emerson Pool, which is currently leaking water and now has no water in it and is at risk of cave in. Finance system that was previously funded at a, at a former special town meeting. A Chamberlain Park Bridge, which is a, which is a safety risk as it is now. The fire department self contained breathing apparatus and several public works vehicles which are due for replacement. The next priority is assuring additional phased funding for projects that are already underway. And ones that are entering, you know, the latter stages of their progress, and those include. White Pond, which would be funding this year's phase, phase two. Of the funding, the Harvey Wheeler ADA exterior access, we, that's a very large project, it's likely going to cost in the three hundred, three hundred fifty thousand dollar range. It's necessary for egress from the, the bottom floor, and it has to do with the stairs and the ADA ramp that's there. Which is currently in disrepair and that we have some money from last year and we're adding to it. Hopefully for, for this year, because when we went to, you know, price that out, it was much more than we had. The ride out bathrooms were deferred from last fiscal year, and the latter, number one refurbishment was also a deferred from last year, but likely could not sustain another, another season of use. And then the, the other ones that are, you know. Somewhat less priority are the ones that, you know, were determined to be entering either a first phase or were identified as desirable. And then we have to give consideration to reoccurring, we often. Allocate somewhere between two hundred and two hundred fifty thousand dollars in the capital plan for the upkeep and maintenance of the twenty six. Public buildings, the in townwide building maintenance, and we have historically done anywhere between. Three hundred and fifty to a million dollars for CPW's roads, parking lot and sidewalk reconstruction program. And so what we'll need to do is sort of back in, back into those and see what the minimum is that we can do in order to upkeep those. Those assets. Next, next slide, please. So we're moving on to outside of borrowing and debt authorizations, the town cash capital is also referred to as capital outlay. And these are generally smaller capital projects which are able to be funded within the town's levy limit through tax dollars. So prior to fiscal year twenty, the town historically allocated about two million dollars a year for capital projects, which you're seeing here. And mostly those were projects within, you know, IT facilities. Police for vehicles, road and sidewalk maintenance efforts within public works. And sort of those reoccurring. Expenses that are happening regarding smaller. Smaller, I'm sorry, can't think of the word. Well, anyway, last year, in keeping with our own historical spending trends, we initially proposed an appropriation of about one point eight million. And the revised budget, similar to what I talked about in the debt plan, was reduced by about seven hundred thousand dollars or nearly forty percent. And so for this fiscal year, the proposal is to really carry forward that more conservative budgeting amount. And we expect to propose funding, as Stephen mentioned, a close to the one point one million dollar range. Or something similar to that, but again, this is just the preliminary numbers. Next slide, please. So within that one point one that we're thinking about, there's various projects spread throughout several town departments, specifically. Our initial funding recommendations include two hundred and fifty Specifically, our initial funding recommendations include two hundred and fifty thousand dollars towards the Town's Technology Fund, which was established several years back to ensure the systematic replacement and updating of the town's technological infrastructure. And this is a yearly appropriation, similar to what I talked about in the debt capital. We also are thinking about two hundred thousand dollars for the facilities departments for the maintenance and upkeep of the town's buildings. This is also an annual appropriation, which I talked about. A hundred thousand dollars towards sustainability efforts, which for the most part will be put towards the required matching funds that we need through the green communities program that we have. We suspect that this will likely be the last year of funding through that as the green communities folks have been pretty vocal about saying that, you know, the towns that have received the funding through years past likely wouldn't be considered for future funding after FY twenty-two. So we're trying to get the biggest bang for our buck as we are moving into what likely might be the last year for a while of receiving that grant. We have twenty-five thousand dollars allocated for the replacement of the Department of Planning and Land Management's vehicle. Two hundred and twenty thousand that's used for the vehicle replacement program from the police department, including the introduction or integration of additional hybrid and electric vehicles. I think it's probably worth noting that to date, the police department has seven electric vehicles and two plug-in hybrids. So we're really committed to trying to electrify the, the police force. And lastly, we anticipate allocating about three hundred and five thousand dollars to the Public Works Department for their efforts relative to sustainable infrastructure, stormwater management, sign street replacement, small equipment repairs or purchases, the acquisition and maintenance of public shade trees and various other road and sidewalk reconstruction efforts. So much like facilities and IT, this too is an annual appropriation, although the amount varies greatly from year to year. Last slide. So again, the information we just reviewed is very much in draft form. However, in the upcoming weeks, the town team expects to have a more finalized plan, which we would have complete prior to the formal public hearing scheduled for April. That's it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Kate. So are there any questions for either the town manager or our deputy town manager for this section?
So, okay, there.
Linda, I have a question. I'm not sure if it's for Stephen or Mary Hartman. I'm trying to put those two presentations together. I'm a little confused. I think I heard Stephen say that the preliminary guideline is less than the final FY twenty. And yet I think I heard Mary say that even with the preliminary guideline number, taxes would go up about two point five percent. So I don't understand how we could be spending less, but taxes would go up. I'm trying to put those two statements together and I'm a little confused.
Yeah, I think, sorry, go ahead, Mary, if you want to go for, I was just gonna say there is a loss of revenue from the budget that needs to be accounted for.
The CARES Act.
Well, CARES Act didn't really do much of the operating budget. Those were all additional expenses. But no, I think that we have had loss of local receipts. Meals, lodging, and I don't know, Mary, if you have more of that, but I know, I know reduced revenue is, it kind of, we have to levy for some of that now.
You're right, we are losing revenue and local receipts. But in fact, I think the request that's coming in right now is actually a little bit above FY twenty-one spending. But you have to remember that in FY twenty and FY twenty-one, we have contractual obligations that increase things. So we're not adding a lot of new services, but the spending is about level. And I think Stephen's right that the taxes are going up because we're losing revenue in other areas.
Okay. I see a question from Carmen.
Thanks. I was just curious what item three B on the capital plan is. It was described as land acquisition for wireless tower Kai's Road project. I think it was around two million dollars.
Yeah, I can answer that. So that really is kind of a placeholder. Right now, we are having discussed, I think most people who have tried to use their cellphone in the center of our community know it, service is terrible. The parking meters that I just talked about rely on cellular service to operate. And if you aren't familiar with our parking meters, they're, they're like little computers on a pole that sit outside three hundred and sixty-five days a year. And they're solar battery operated and they're always, it's like, if your phone is on roam, your battery dies faster. That's been happening with our meters as well. And so, you know, so there's a lot of, and I think during the pandemic, a lot of businesses who don't have the benefit of, we don't have a lot of broadband infrastructure down there. I don't think the cable, like the Comcast infrastructure in the downtown is very good either. And so I think some businesses were really impacted by the, you know, lack of quality cell coverage in downtown. But the, I kind of buried the lead here, the biggest reason is it is a really public safety first issue, where if you're in one of the old brick buildings downtown and something happened and you had to call nine-one-one on your cellphone, it would be very difficult to get a signal to do that. And so there's been a lot of talk over a number of years about the need for a cell, a cell tower somewhere in the downtown. And we've kind of chosen Kai's Road, which is a town on site, is the best place to try and figure out a way to do that. We're in active discussions. We were working with an RF consultant to try and, Kate had actually spent a ton of time before I got here on this and we've even gone to the process of an RFP. We're basically taking a second kind of updated look at that and seeing where we can go. And so one of the options would potentially be for the town to build the tower and then lease it out to sell companies like Verizon and, you know, T-Mobile and things like that. So we have that item in there as, like I said, a placeholder. I don't know that we'll be able to advance that project in FY twenty-two, but we are in the planning stages.
Okay, Jen.
And I apologize for the background light, which is why I will go back to my stationary face after this. One question, and we don't need to get into it now, but it would be helpful for me as we look at the budget to know exactly what the level of lost revenue from our economic center is, more because I know how much effort and time and concern and, you know, and reported support of our local merchants and businesses there has been. And if we're, if we need to look at it differently or look at it more, or simply if it just is a guideline for us to see what these, this kind of an event does, it would be helpful to me.
Thank you.
Yeah, just real quick, sorry, we do, Carrie has done a lot of that analysis and I don't have those off the top of my head, but I know, I know Meals is off at least a third. And lodging is off, I think, possibly two-thirds. So it's hundreds of thousands of dollars in revenue, Mary. I don't know if you recall those, but Carrie did present those. We will, yeah, and they'll be a part of our, our final budget presentation.
All right. Thank you very much. Jeremy, are there any other questions that have been logged in?
I saw Carlin Reed had a question, but it looked like it got answered. So if anybody else has a question, you can use the raise hand feature at the bottom of your screen.
I don't think your question did get answered unless I read it wrong, because it was a question regarding enterprise budgets. And so in case it didn't, the enterprise budgets are historically not discussed at the preview meeting because we haven't necessarily dug into that yet. But will obviously be discussed at the public hearing. And I suspect it's because PEG is looking to review the budget at their next meeting, but we, we don't have it yet. Miss Reed, but we're working on it.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that response. That was it. Thanks.
Okay, good. We'll move, thank you very much, both of you, and we'll move on now to the personnel board presentation. And it looks like we have Bill Maratchek and we have Amy Foley, our HR director. So Amy, I don't.
Bill, I think Bill's gonna do the presentation. He's on mute.
Okay.
Okay, I think I'm fine now. So my name is Bill Maratchek. I am the recently elected chair of the Personnel Board. I've been a member of the Personnel Board for the last couple of years. Since I don't know many of you, I just thought I would give you a little bit of recap on me. I've been a resident of Concord since the early two, two thousands. I've worked over the last thirty-five years in both public and private HR capacities in the greater Boston area. Most recently, doing a lot of pro bono work in organizational development and HR, most recently with Open Table in Maynor. And unlike many people who are residents of Concord and their families who have a long lineage in Concord, I can tell you that my wife and I are the only two Maratcheks in the town. My purpose is to, is to, to present the, the, the information for the revised article, repositioning of the article that was presented last year. So, well, if we go, Chris, to the first. So this outlines what we're going to propose, which is to strike the text of the personnel bylaw in its entirety and replace it with language that shifts authority for establishing, amending, administering personnel rules regarding wage and paid leave provisions. And this is all to be in the, all to point to the responsibility of the town manager. Let's go to the next one, Chris. So I thought it would be easier for me to, to present this information in sort of these three columns. One is, this is the current situation with the current personnel bylaw. What we want to achieve, which is the target, and then the proposal, or how do we get there? I'll focus on the middle and the final, last column, where what is important in what we're trying to achieve is a personnel system that is responsive to present and future workforce requirements and trends. I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna read all of them, but I think it's important that it be appropriate for a town manager form of government. And how we're going to get there is through a revised personnel bylaw, in which the town manager is entrusted with the administration, including classification and a compensation plan. It requires the town manager to adopt and amend rules, regulations establishing a lawful, equitable and efficient system of personal administration of the employees. And at the same time, retain the town meeting control of overall compensation and benefit expenses through the budget appropriation. So the last slide is why a change now. Now we have to wait for the next town meeting to finalize decisions regarding the wages and paid leave provisions. The Personnel Board feels that this is an inefficient way to have to respond to the needs and the requirements of the town and that the town manager needs a much more agile and responsive pay and personnel system that fits the ongoing needs of the town and, and its residents. So that's essentially what it is that is being proposed. And I guess at this point, are there any questions?
Okay, see, none at this time. I'm gonna move on to a report from.
Although we actually, we do have one question. Tanya, so you raised your hand briefly. I'm gonna go ahead and promote you to panelists. If you want to identify yourself, name and address, please.
Okay, perhaps she can raise her question at the conclusion under public comment. I'm gonna move on to a report from Tom Kearns on this.
Part of this presentation, Linda.
Okay, Tanya, go ahead.
Thank you. Because it's, this is what, part of what this article is based on.
Tanya, there was a slight delay there, so we weren't sure you were gonna be joining us. So please state your name and address.
Tanya Galas, sixty-two Prescott Road. And, and my question, and my comment is that we are not a town manager form of government. We are a strong town manager government. However, the select board is still the director of the town manager. And the town meeting is the decider, as the article states. Therefore, I don't understand where this town manager form of government phrase is coming from. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for that comment.
Amy, can you?
It's a question as well.
Yeah, is, Amy, are you going to respond?
Um, I think it was just a matter, we understand the form of government is strong town manager. It was just, I think, meaning to talk about that we have a town manager. And typically in towns with town managers, the structure of the personnel system is different than what Concord has had. So we can, we can be more specific on that in the next presentation.
Okay, thank you. And there'll be opportunity to discuss it further. It's a public hearing. Thank you. I'm gonna move on to.
Linda, we actually have one more question. I'm seeing Ned Perry from the public. I'm gonna go ahead and promote you if you just want to say your name and address, please.
Good morning, all. My name is Ned Perry. I'm at three sixty-two Bedford Street. I appreciate Mr. Maratchek's introduction of himself. I'll say that I've been in town most of the last seventy-eight years. I worked for Charles Evans and Associates, which was a public personnel and finance consultant. My professional career has been in HR. I question really the whole viability of this article. As I'm not, I, I worked with many HR departments within municipalities, consulting, doing wage and hour classifications. I would strongly urge the powers that be to look at where the review of the personnel town personnel should be, I believe it should be with Mr. Maratchek's committee. We've worked with it for many, many years and I would hope that we would do so in the future. Thank you very much for the time.
Thank you for your comment. All right, Jeremy, are there any other questions in the queue?
No, it's any more hands, no.
Okay, thank you. Now I'll move on to the report from CPC and Tom Kearns. Welcome.
Thank you. Good morning, everybody. Chris, maybe we have a couple of exhibit, thank you so much. I think we could move to the first slide. I'm just going to read a brief narrative. For the twenty twenty-one annual town meeting, there are a total of fifteen projects proposed for funding. The total is one million, seven hundred and sixty-nine thousand, eight hundred and ninety-one dollars, of which forty-four thousand, one hundred and seventy-two dollars is from the prior year undesignated fund balance and one million, seven hundred and twenty-five thousand, seven hundred and nineteen dollars from projected fiscal year twenty twenty-two fund reserves. These projects are broken down into community housing at sixteen percent, totaling two hundred and eighty-eight thousand, eight hundred and eighty dollars. Historic preservation at thirty-three percent totaling five hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars, five hundred and seventy-six thousand, five hundred and eleven dollars. And maybe, Chris, we could go to the next slide. You can just generally see the, the projects proposed. Open space at thirty-two percent totaling five hundred and fifty-nine thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars. Recreation at seventeen percent totaling three hundred and four thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars. And maybe, Chris, we go to the last slide. And administration at 2%, totaling $40,000. Thank you.
Thank you for that succinct report. Jeremy, are there questions for Tom?
Not seen right now, but if you have any, please click the erase and feature at the bottom of your screen, please.
Okay, I think we're ready for the Historic Districts Commission to report. Peter. You're on mute. Peter, you're still on mute.
How about that? Can you hear me now?
Now we can. Thank you.
Sorry about that. Well, good morning, everyone. This is, I'm gonna try to beat Tom for brevity here. This is a very small expansion to the Main Street Historic District. This came out of an effort a couple of years ago to actually expand the district in a larger way. We have two two properties you can see on Thoreau Street there, 21 Thoreau Street and 29 to 31 Thoreau Street. Both homeowners have asked that their properties be added to the Main Street District. The house at 21 Thoreau was constructed around 1862 and was moved to its current location around 1891. And the house at 29 Thoreau was constructed around 1843 and owned for many years by the Gleason family. There were two very similar extensions of historic districts in the Hubbardville District. Two homes added in 2016 and 2018. Both were noncontroversial and were passed overwhelmingly at town meeting. So that's it.
Thank you, Peter. Do we have any questions for Peter? And thank you, everyone, for your patience as we allow for a certain delay, obviously, in getting these questions identified. All right, thank you. We'll move on now to the presentation from the Planning Board, and Kristin Ferguson is here to do that. She has a number of items to bring before us. Good morning, Kristin.
Good morning. Sorry, Linda, I I think we've got the Historical Commission.
All right, I didn't mean to skip the Historical Commission. Marcia.
Good morning, Marcia Rasmussen, Director of Planning and Land Management, and I'm presenting on behalf of the Historical Commission. No one was available this morning. Well, actually, Melissa Southfield is attending, but asked that I provide this presentation. The Historical Commission is working to bring Concord's Demolition Review Bylaw into conformity with the National Historic Standards Act, which sets the rules of eligibility for both national historic preservation and to clarify definitions that we have in our demolition review. So we'll be revising the definition of historically significant buildings or structures to include those properties adjacent to historic districts or that are associated with one or more historic persons or events or with the architectural, cultural, political, economic, or social history of Concord or are architecturally or historically important by reason of period, style, or construction method, either by itself or in context with other structures and buildings. They'll also be changing the beginning date of the one-year delay to coincide with the date when the Historical Commission makes its determination and change the date when properties become subject to the demolition review by revising the date a property may be considered to be a rolling 50 years or older to match the eligibility requirements of the National Historic Preservation Act. Since 2016, which was the last time this bylaw was amended, the Commission has reviewed 41 properties, and of these 15 received a determination of preferably preserved and demolition was imposed for one year. Of those 15, only two properties were actually saved, and these two properties represent a rate of less than 5% of those reviewed, which were ultimately saved from demolition. The proposed amendments do bring the Concord bylaw into greater conformity with national standards. This 50-year timeframe was established to provide the time needed to develop an historic perspective and evaluate a property's significance while guarding against listing properties of only passing contemporary or popular interest. And I wanted to note that since 2016, when you look at the information provided by the Building Inspector, there have been 188 new houses constructed. Of those, 110 were tear downs, or 58%. And we're seeing that number increase. So this demolition review would allow that those properties that are historically significant to be identified, to be researched. The Commission frequently asks that they be recorded, so we get the floor plans. We get the documentation of both the interior and exterior of the building, and even if it is lost, we at least have that historic information that will become part of the town's archives. And so that's the presentation. Questions?
Thank you, Marcia. Jeremy.
As usual, if anybody has a question, please use the raise hand feature on the bottom of the screen, but I'm currently not seeing anything.
All right, thank you. I will now move on to the Planning Board presentation. And Kristin, you have quite a list to bring before us, so welcome.
Morning. This is Kristin Ferguson with the Planning Board. It's it's a list, but I don't think it'll be a lengthy talk. I just wanted to make sure I captured everything in front of us. So we've got, you know, five or six proposals that we're bringing to town meeting this year, one of which, as you mentioned earlier, is something we didn't move last year, which is the two-family additional dwelling unit. And the amendment is basically allowing two-family dwelling units by special permit in residency zoning district. That's in keeping with our desire to see more density closer to, you know, transit spaces and town centers. So then the other one is, well, related to that is we're still discussing for conversion of structures built before 1928. We're talking about exempting garages from the gross gross floor area for the conversion of that structure built. That's, you know, essentially before zoning. So those kind of two items related to this two-family additional dwelling unit. We currently do have a two-family additional dwelling unit bylaw. This is just kind of some additional text that we would be adding, again, to really promote more diversity of housing and density closer to town town centers. For our floodplain conservancy district, that bylaw is being updated by our town planner to comply with the state model floodplain bylaw for all communities in the National Flood Insurance Program. But it's also to formalize Concord's compensatory flood storage policy. So that's kind of a lengthy bylaw that's gonna have a quite a bit of additional information in it, but that's really to to be in compliance there. The next one has to do with earth removal, which we're proposing to add the word fill, so it will be earth removal and fill. So that because both tend to impact the site. We're also proposing to add language to require the applicant to produce an analysis and site plan, which would describe alternatives to the location and size of the earth removal or filling operation. And then we're proposing, based on the Economic Vitality Committee's proposal regarding seasonal seasonal seating, seasonal outdoor seating for restaurants in town. We are proposing amending a table within the bylaws about minimum parking and that has to do with the off-street parking loading and design standards. That's the formal place in the bylaw so that we can accommodate seasonal outdoor seating at restaurants without requiring additional parking. So that one just came to us recently from the Economic Vitality Committee, and the Planning Board supports that and would like to bring that before the town. And finally, a rather small edits from to our tree preservation bylaw. We've had a reviewing agent work on the bylaw for the last two years, or in other words, going out and addressing any sites with that triggered the bylaw, and they had several recommendations, and we'd like to incorporate those now that we've had the bylaw in place for a couple of years. And that's what we're bringing this year, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
I I have a question. I'm sorry. Yeah, so was that additional dwelling unit for prior to 4221 saying excluding the garages from the gross floor area? If the additional dwelling unit was actually placed in the garage structure that is like above the garage structure, would it be excluded from the GFA calculation? And therefore, you could always, if you had a structure earlier than that, always build a additional dwelling unit?
So I'd say we're still kind of analyzing these, like, we've got one more meeting that we really need to kind of nail this down. It was brought to us, and we want to acknowledge kind of all of the that we can figure out potential possibilities. So I guess I would refrain from answering that hypothetical at this point, if that's okay.
Okay.
But it is something, like you're saying, we want to kind of say, well, what what would that really impact? And what are we not looking at?
Yeah, I mean, if that you excluded, I mean, the effect would either be if if it's not on the garage structure, reducing the size of the additional dwelling unit you could construct, because now one-fifth would be based on a smaller total number. Or if it's saying, no, you can put it above the garage, it's saying it's unlimited. So I guess that's the question.
And and it has been a challenge, and I don't want to take up too much time, but but, you know, trying to follow the purpose of the bylaw, which is to provide smaller and more diverse housing. We don't want to counteract that. So thanks for bringing that up.
Thanks.
Yeah, thank you for that clarifying question. All right. Jeremy, are you seeing any other questions?
I'm not this time, no.
Okay, I think we're ready. Move on to the presentation from Minuteman Vocational Technical High School.
Good morning. My name's Ed Boquillan. I'm the Superintendent of Minuteman. Happy to be with you this morning. Next slide, please, Chris. Overall, our operating budget is up about 2.4%, which I was pleased to see fits into the Concord guidelines. Operating a capital debt is up about 400,000. And our MSBA project debt, which peaks pretty much in FY '22 and '23, is up significantly, about 26%. Next slide, please. Some of the assumptions we've made in revenue for our budget this year. We're using revenue, Chapter 70 State Aid numbers that were released early in the fall or in the middle of the fall. The Governor's H1 Budget shows different numbers here, but Minuteman has never really changed its assumptions as different versions of the budget are released. We, if we do have to change assessments, they would be reduced, not increased, from the assessments that have were passed by the School Committee in January. We're also, to make up for those deficits in revenue, we're using more out-of-district revenue. We get out-of-district revenue from students who come to Minuteman from outside of the district in terms of tuition and in terms of a capital fee. Both of those fees are set by the Commissioner of Education. We're also using certified E and D in that. So we've that's what we've done to make up for some of our anticipated revenue losses. Next slide, please. As you have heard from other presenters this morning, COVID assumptions that we've made in our budget, we're assuming some sort of remote learning will be with us. Again, reduced or unknown state and federal aid, that may change. We're borrowing the final bond. And one of the big drivers for our budget next year is the student interest in CTE continues, and we have already exceeded the design enrollment of the school. So we're looking at ways to increase the capacity of the school. Next slide. This is as a few weeks ago. I can tell you this of a few days ago, we had total applications of about 360 students in district, about 260. This slide shows 255. About 41 students from eligible out-of-district communities. That's a community that has no vocational education. And we have about 200 slots this year. And we will have a waiting list. Not all member town students that want to come to Minuteman are gonna be able to. At the same time, we're not gonna be having any out-of-district students next year. We are committed to serving our in-district kids first. So we're gonna have a waiting list of probably 30 to 40 kids from member towns and close to 100 kids from out-of-district. Next slide, please. Our priorities that flow out of some of those assumptions, obviously, student staff health. We're starting our animal science program this fall. And we've also expanded our engineering, robotics, and automation program into the logistics engineering space. As I mentioned, we're looking at some cost-effective ways to increase the capacity of the school. The school was designed for 628 kids. We currently have 630. We're anticipating close to 700 kids next fall. Our athletic field construction project is underway. We hope to have it finished in the fall, and that would allow us, and if COVID is managed, we'd be ramping up our facilities rental. We've had no revenue from rentals for more than a year. Next slide, please. Big drivers was the cost of living increase in the contract. Our electrical and utility costs are higher than we anticipated. In part because of COVID, because we've had to do more air exchange. We have fewer kids in the building generating BTUs. But we're tracking that pretty closely. Maintenance contracts on some of the new equipment that has been installed in the school, field operations increases. Obviously, our property insurance went up because of the value of the building. And health insurance and transportation are down. Next slide. And so the full assessment for Concord is 1.289. That's about a $75,000 increase. Next slide. This breaks down the assessment into the minimum required contribution, and it also breaks out the debt service at a at that bottom line there, 378,000. Next slide. Current enrollment has been pretty stable from Concord the last few years. We have seen an uptick in applications from Concord for next fall. But I'll remind folks that the assessment is based not on a year-to-year enrollment. It's based on a four-year rolling average, which was incorporated into the regional agreement revisions that were passed in 2016. Next slide, please. Special ed enrollment continues to be strong at Minuteman. We probably this year fell to second place in terms of the number and percentage of special ed students that we serve in our high school. The students do very well. We're very proud of our kids and how we take care of them there. Next slide. Special ed is a big budget driver. If you compare us to other schools, we're at the top. Next slide. Capital, next slide. Just breaking it out a little bit. Again, the operating budget up 2.4%. Capital, the increase in $459,000, that is based upon the facilities lighting borrowing and also our contribution to our capital stabilization fund. And you can see the building project debt is up 1.2 million. Next slide. OPEB, we've been contributing a small amount over the years. Our long-term strategy is when our ESCO debt, that's energy service contract, debt is retired in FY '25, we would be moving about 400,000 a year into our OPEB. Next slide. I believe this is the last slide. Yes, questions? Thank you.
Thank you. So questions for Superintendent Boquillian?
Do you have one? Carmen, if you just want to go ahead, you can unmute yourself.
Okay, Carmen.
Thank you. Dr. Boquillian, can you remind us how many years the debt service will be going and whether it'll be at pretty much the same level?
When our final borrowing is completed in this fiscal year, we'll have, I believe, 29 years left on the mortgage, so to speak. so to speak. And it will peak over the next few years, well, next year, and the year after will be about the same. And then it starts to go down slowly.
Okay. Jane?
Thank you. And this is less of a question, more of a compliment. I just wanted to point out that I think we have been always well-served by Minuteman, but the new facility under Dr. Boquillian's management and superintendency is phenomenal. And I happen to know several families of kids who would not necessarily have ever considered a Minuteman Tech as their high school of choice previously, who sweated it during this year to make sure that their, that their child could get in. That is amazing accolade. I mean, the fact that you have a waiting list, it doesn't mean I feel great empathy for the families who are on that, but that is a, that's a new phase of understanding asset, the regional, or the, you know, the multi-town technical school, or I guess not the appropriate word, but that Minuteman Tech is for us.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jane. Any other comments, Jeremy?
This time, no.
Okay, thank you. I think we're ready to move on to the Concord schools and Dr. Hunter. Thank you. And I see Jared Stanton this year as well, so.
Yes, thank you. I'm actually just going to open it up and then Jared's going to take it from there to talk through the numbers. You know, it's nice to follow. Eddie's kind of, you know, set me up. It's been an extraordinary year in the schools, of course. So we are building budgets now. It's interesting, we all had to pick assumptions and Minuteman picked different ones than I did. So we're all building contingencies because we actually don't quite know how this is going to play out. So our assumption is that we will be back in school full-time. And any, anything that requires remote or additional hybrid costs will come from the CARES reserve that we have. So we've built budgets based on a full-time return with modifications. Knowing, you know, there is light at the end of the tunnel. It does feel like a long way still to go. And, you know, we're just grateful for so much support we've had from this entire community. I could go on and on just on that topic alone. So Jared's going to go through what we've put together. The school committee has had several conversations about our budget and where we are. The, we've been to the finance committee twice as well, and I expect we'll be back in March to share with them. They have not, we have not voted a budget as of yet at the school committee level. That's coming up in March. So there's still maybe a little bit of movement. And we have our public hearing coming up March 9th. So Jared, I'll turn it over to you.
Hi, good morning, everybody. So as Dr. Hunter said, the administration has been looking at all scenarios that could be on the table for the fall. Initially, we budgeted for all of them, but then we'd had to accommodate for all the options, knowing that we would have to pick a preferred option. Once we were able to do that, the budget really started to come together. So there are some assumptions in this budget. As Dr. Hunter said, the first one, first one in is everyone would be back in person, perhaps with some modifications. We did not budget monies for remote academy, which we are running right now, but if there becomes a need, the money would come out of the CARES Act and contingency planning. This budget, budget also does not include student supervisors, which is hundreds of thousands of dollars. Substitute professional development lines are fully replenished after we reduce them in FY '21. And lastly, software was broken out by school and department level and will be managed by the teaching and learning department. About 80% of our software is either COVID-related or is assisting in the remote learning. Therefore, the FY '22 superintendent's recommended budget is $41,805,761 and 2.52% increase over FY '21's budget. This is currently $289,396 more than the Concord Fincals. Next slide, please. There's a comparison of FY '20's budget nationals versus the FY '21's budget in the requested difference rolled up by the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education 1,000 functions. There were lines that were budget drivers such as teacher salaries, substitute costs, new software, professional development, and the need for two new bus leases. And there were also some budget savings, especially in special education tuitions, which is in the 9,000 series you're seeing there, as well as special education transportation. And then some budget savings in our tutors and assistants lines. Next slide, please. As part of the Concord Public Schools five-year capital plan, the district is requesting 900,000, which is included in the town manager's capital budget. Next slide, please. Items included in the capital plan is the Continued Energy Recovery Unit Replacement Project. FY '22's focus on, will focus on the Thoreau Elementary School. There is some money for carpet and tile replacements, which is a four-year plan. We would also like to start a phased-in approach with the new, with an integrated playground at the Thoreau. We are working with the PTG also on that. With the help of the Director of Sustainability, Kate Hamley, Concord will be applying for the Green Communities Grant to install rooftop units at the Ripley Building. We have money in there for engineering costs and contingency costs not covered by the grant. And lastly, we have some small paving to do at Ripley and money set aside for the puberty in the Sanborn buildings. Next slide, please. Like the Concord Public Schools, the administration has been looking at all the scenarios that could be on the table for the fall. There are some assumptions in this budget. The first is that grades nine through 12 will be back in person, again, with potentially some modifications. Will we use CARES Act money for unknowns COVID-19 related? We did not fund the supervisors at the high school as well. And if those needs arise, we will use the CARES Act. Substitute professional development lines were fully replenished after we reduced them in FY '21. We expect the return of the athletics in our co-curricular activities. And lastly, software was broken out by high school department level. And that again will be managed by the Teaching and Learning Department. And therefore, the current FY '22 superintendent's recommended budget is $35,781,033. This is $151,502 above the Finance Committee guideline. Next slide. The recommended budget for, again, FY '22 is $35,781,033. This is 2.35% more than the FY '21's approved budget. Here's a comparison of the FY '20 budget nationals versus the FY '21's budget in the requested budget rolled up by the DESI 1,000 functions. Again, there were areas that we had budget drivers such as teacher salaries, software, pensions, the need for an additional nurse at the high school, and like the Concord budget, the need for two new bus leases. There were also some areas of savings such as special educations, tuitions, debt, insurance, and also some savings in our tutor and assistant lines. Next slide, please. So as you know, assessments are based on the October 1st enrollment. On October 1st, Concord had 77.32% of the students and Carlisle had 22.68%. This is a 0.85% enrollment shift towards Concord. These numbers do drive everything. Therefore, Concord's overall assessment without debt is increasing $947,978. And the total assessment with increased debt is $24,625,486. And that is it. Short and sweet today.
Lot of numbers nonetheless. Any questions for the school department?
We have a question from Matt, looks like. Do you want to go ahead, Matt?
Yeah, I'm just trying to reconcile the guideline summary that I saw with the numbers that were just presented. And I thought I saw, and of course, I could be wrong because it just flew by. Just 100K difference for each of the school budget lines relative to guideline. But these show, you know, almost 300K and 150K. So it seems like there's a bigger gap than the guidelines presentations were indicating, unless I miss saw something.
So the Concord, I think I understand. So the Concord CPS budget is about 289,000 above the Concord guideline. I think the Concord guideline is about 1.81%, and this is about just over 2.5%. And the high school is about $151,000 over the guideline, and the overall increase is 2.35%. Did I answer that question, Matt?
I don't know. I guess that would be a question either for the town manager or for Mary Hartman. Just in that, again, I saw, thought I saw three line items, one for the, the town budget being, you know, currently about 100K over what the guideline is, and each of the school budgets being about 100K over. But it looks like maybe those gaps are bigger. So that's all. Again, I'm not sure if I'm misreading, but that's what I thought I saw in the summary.
I actually, if I could chime in, Linda, are you okay?
Go ahead, Mary, quickly.
Actually, Jared, I'm not sure that the numbers that you're showing reflect the difference to the final guideline that we published, but I'm pretty confident that the difference that we have right now is closer to 100,000, both for the elementary and the high school assessment. So we can talk offline, but I think we're, we're better. I'm pretty, I'm really confident that it's closer to 100,000.
So I think that answers the question, that the final guideline actually had more money
It did.
than the original guideline. And I think his presentation's against the original guideline.
Exactly.
And Mary, that was just Thursday night, correct?
It was.
So you haven't been able to follow up with us yet. So that's a happy surprise.
It is a happy surprise. So you see, we're closer than we thought.
Good news.
All right. Thank you, everyone. Any other questions, Jeremy?
It doesn't appear so, no.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Hunter and Jared for your presentations. All right. We're going to move on to the Public Works Commission presentation.
Thank you. The first couple items that we had mentioned before was the capital improvement and the capital debt. Kate has really actually talked about that already. Those are typical things that we do every year. The final four items on this chart here are part of the enterprise funds. And it's just authorization to be able to spend all of the income that comes in, plus any fund balances that we have as expenditures during the year. So one is the solid waste, which is the program for recycling and trash pickup. The second one is the sewer system, those residents who are on the sewers. The third one is the sewer improvement fee, so that whenever there is an increase in the sewer enterprise itself, there's a fee associated with that. And those fees are then put into a fund and we're able to use those, those revenues to be able to improve the sewer system itself. And the final one is the water system, same thing. Everyone pays their water fees that goes into the fund with the existing balances, and that allows us to provide safe water for all citizens. Are there any questions?
So Jim, I'll just ask, your initial comment also addressed the capital debt request?
Correct.
Okay.
So, so Kate, Kate actually mentioned all of the things that the town manager's budget is, is doing on the debt, debt areas. And so we have made recommendations to the town manager as to which items the Public Works would like to see funded.
Thank you. Jeremy, any other questions?
Doesn't appear so, no.
All right. Thank you, Terry. All right. The next one is Tax Fairness Committee. David Carr is here to present that.
So I think you have slides for me? Okay, so, yeah, so the Tax Fairness Committee does, is planning to put an article on the, on the warrant. And this is, would be to accept legislation making the senior means test exemption permanent. So just to recap what this is, so the senior means says an exemption exempts up to 50% of property tax for seniors. There are certain income and other guidelines. So this is basically a means test, need-based exemption. That 50% can be pretty substantial, though, for the people that need it. Our objectives are maintain the basically the same basic criteria for eligibility. There's no substantial change in that. However, we do have to tweak some details to simplify the administration. And the, and the main thing, we want to make this permanent until revoked by town meeting. We've done this successfully the past three years. We'd like to continue doing it and not to come back every three years to legislature to, to get it renewed again. So we can go on to the next slide. Okay, so here's where we stand. Last year, we took the first step in getting this, this exemption renewed. Article 15 was approved. The home rule petition was filed. Legislature did not pass. It did, it did get reported favorably out of its, out of its committee, but ran out of time. It has already been filed again. You can look it up online. It's HD 274. And we are hoping that the legislature will enact, this is a special act, in time for town meeting. And in that case, we have the warrant article prepared and it will be on the, it will, it will be available. We will move it if, if we can. That's all contingent on the, I think that's all contingent on special act being passed in time. But we do want to be prepared for that and hopefully it all goes through. And we are very concerned, of course, about the possibility that it does not, the special act does not get passed. We do have contingency plans we're working on, but those do not involve town meetings. So I haven't written them up today. Thank you.
Thank you, David. Any questions for David? Okay, I think we're ready to move on to the Climate Action Advisory Board's presentation. And Alice Kaufman is here to do that. Alice, welcome.
Good morning. So I am Alice Kaufman, 1615 Lowell Road. And I've been asked to fill in today because neither Kate Hamley, the town, the town sustainability director, or Jake Swenson, the Chair of the Climate Action Advisory Board, were able to be here. So I drew the short straw. I am neither on town staff nor on the Climate Action Advisory Board. That's my disclaimer. So the article that I'll speak to today is a request, I'm glad I'm following David Carr, is a request for home rule legislation to allow Concord to prohibit the expansion of fossil fuel infrastructure in new construction. Next slide, please. Oh, maybe I didn't have, Concord had proposed an article for last year's town meeting, Article 40, that would have created a bylaw requiring new construction to be fossil fuel-free. Just before town meeting, the Attorney General, Mara Healy, disapproved a similar bylaw in Brookline. But in her decision, she wrote, "If we were permitted to base our determination on policy considerations, we would have approved the bylaw." But, here's the big but, because the state building code, the gas code, and Chapter 164 of the general laws of the Commonwealth occupy the field of regulation and preempt local bylaws in their respective fields, we must disapprove the bylaw. So the way that this, we have worked to get around those preemptions is a request for home rule legislation, which would convey the authority to Concord to by-step those laws that for which we are currently preempted, would have preempted us from taking local action. You know, when the, when the governor issued his State of the State address, he charted Massachusetts' future to be net zero by 2050. Unfortunately, the governor failed to give us the tools or the authority to meet the state goals. And that's what we're asking for in the home rule petition. We are in a global climate emergency. We don't have to look far to see the effects from a change in climate. Fires in California to Australia, the total breakdown of the electric grid in Austin, Texas just last week. And this photo is from the floods last year in Houston, Texas. A team from Concord joined the Rocky Mountain Institute's Building Electrification Accelerator, along with sixteen other Massachusetts communities. Over the course of five months, we learned from one another. And we considered the science, technology, and policy options to meet our local mandates for carbon emissions and for addressing climate change. Five strategies were identified through the accelerator, and Concord has chosen to follow three of them in our strategy for Concord. The first is a nonbinding resolution. The second is a home rule petition, and the third is green zoning. On February eighth, the Select Board approved the nonbinding resolution that the CAB had requested. It was being sent to the legislature, the governor, our state legislators, state agencies, and it's calling for a commitment to adjust transition away from fossil fuels and to decarbonize buildings to the Commonwealth. The home rule petition is the next step in Concord's strategy. And we will probably be, there'll probably be ten other communities asking for the same thing for their communities. Among them are Newton, Arlington, Brookline, Acton, Lexington, Belmont, and Worcester. It is a global imperative. I think you'd agree that we need to act now. Next slide, please. So town meeting in twenty seventeen passed Article fifty one. These are the goals. The tap, the Energy Futures Task Force was charged to assure the long term viability of the Concord Municipal Light Plant. Address, make sure that the plan addresses climate change, is integrated into the light plant strategic plan and into the comprehensive long range plan, and that it promotes intergenerational equity. Well, CMLP is doing their part, and these goals have been incorporated into the strategic plan. The Sustainable Concord Climate Action and Resilience Plan completed last year idea identifies twenty two priority actions, five around the built environment. And so the warrant article is the next step that will help us meet our own objectives and our own goals for meeting the climate objective. Next slide, please. So to avoid the worst effects of climate change, we need to electrify everything, reduce energy demand, clean up the grid. Electrifying everything, especially our buildings, is important because electricity is the only fuel that can be completely renewable. The good news is the cleaning of the grid is already happening. Concord's electricity is over fifty four, about fifty five percent non emitting right now, and we are on track to meet the goal of a hundred percent non emitting by twenty thirty. The state grid is also working to decarbonize. All electric technology for new homes is practical, cost effective, and will ensure a stronger, cleaner, and resilient community into the future. There are many myths about electric homes because we all kind of have a history of understanding and knowing the old kind of electric heating from the fifties. That's not what we're talking about. In fact, there are lots of electric homes, hundred, more than a hundred of them in Concord already. So the Light Plant Strategic Plan includes what's called beneficial electrification, which is electrify everything that's possible. And it follows a fairly successful program to help people move off of oil heat to cleaner burning, high efficiency electric heat pumps. Next slide, please. Buildings are the largest source of greenhouse gas emissions in Concord. Although our emissions are down from two thousand and eight when we had a baseline greenhouse gas inventory, buildings still are account for sixty eight percent of our total emissions. The bottom line is that we can't meet our climate goals without reductions in our building emissions. Meeting our goals require improving the energy efficiency in older homes and building new homes that are energy efficient and that use electric heat. Next slide. So, oops, I'm a little backwards here. Sorry. So this is a identifies Concord's current strategy for being carbon free. As I said, the light plant is on track to be carbon neutral, carbon, non carbon emitting sources by twenty thirty. And it's for the purchases of renewable power and renewable energy credits. Next slide, please. So this is just saying showing that once again where we need to be. Sorry, those two slides seem to be backwards. I'll fix them before the next time somebody does this presentation. And the key point here for us to know is that every time we invest in fossil fuel infrastructure, whether it's a new house or renovation of an old house, we're locked into an antiquated technology for more than thirty years into the future. We just can't keep building on old technology when we're building for the future. Next slide, please. So what are we doing here? Since we don't yet have the authority to regulate fossil fuels, this is a request to the legislature for the authority to do that. And the reasons are pretty obviously obvious to protect health and safety and welfare of the town. And electrification is the only way we're going to meet our climate goals. I think there might be another slide. Yep. So if we get our home rule petition approved, if we this were Article forty from last year's town meeting, we go into effect. It would require that new construction be fossil fuel free. Next slide, please. If there is one. There. Oh, how would it work? So this here are some of the specifics specifics of Article forty. It would be run by the Concord Building and Inspections Department. And there's an appeal process if somebody is is has been denied a permit because they choose to use fossil fuel burning infrastructure in the building. The town manager or his designee will hear and resolve the appeals. Next slide, please. And there are exemptions to the bylaw. We had a year ago when this before town meeting, we had spent a lot of time meeting with developers, builders, the Housing Authority, the Select Board, Planning Board, and who helped shape and form how the bylaw would be most effective in town and how how we should go forward. So there are some exemptions. For those who have a backup generator, you can use the propane fuels or fuel pipes, whatever you use to backup, to use your backup generator. Outdoor appliances like your outdoor cook stove is okay using your gas propane tank. Gas stoves in commercial kitchens, if we have a development, which is very, I don't know how likely it is that we get another large restaurant or commercial kitchen, but there are some chefs prefer electric cooking, but if it cannot be worked out, there is a would be an exemption for commercial kitchens. Next slide, please. And this is just saying that we are beginning to build a future without fossil fuels for our own well being and for that of the planet. This is a small step in that direction. Take one more slide to end this. Yep. And so the article is to prohibit the a home rule petition allowing us to prohibit the extension of fossil fuel infrastructure in new construction. That's it? No, that's an extra slide. Don't need that one. Any questions?
Thank you, Alice. I'll start by saying, just for the sake of the public, could you just briefly define what the Rocky Mountain Accelerator is?
Oh, sure. The Rocky Mountain Institute is a is a Colorado based consulting firm who advises the public sector on options for energy and energy use, energy efficiency. And so I, we were invited to join. I don't remember exactly how we got invited, but we were, and we formed a team of people who are members of the light plant, the light, the Climate Action Advisory Board. Kate Hanley's on the team. There's a five member team. So it has worked, the whole group has worked over the five months to research what's available, what's been done nationally and internationally, apply what's been done here. There are a number of great resources. The economics have been economic reports has been completed and updated on what, how do you install electric heat? So it's great resources and good training for the entire team.
Great. Some synopsis of that might be helpful in the presentation going forward. So thank you very much.
Sure.
And any other questions for Alice?
So I'm seeing Carlin Reed. Carlin, I'm going to go ahead and promote you to panelist if you wanted to say your name and address, please.
Carlin?
Great. Thank you, Carlin Reed, eighty three Witsen. There's a little bit of a delay between the switching, and I appreciate the opportunity. The question I had was about the appeal process from the bylaw. Alice, if possible, could you expand a little bit more about who would hear the appeals? I think the language you used was any appeal would be heard by the town manager or his designee. Who would be the designee and what would be the appeal process?
Thank you. That has not been worked out who the designee would be. But if this person has turned been turned down for a permit, the appeal would go to the town manager to resolve it. So he would hear the complaint or could select somebody to represent his interests or the town's interest to hear the complaint. It's we have, that's not been fully worked out in the bylaw because we don't have a bylaw yet. But we know that an appeals for an appeals process would be included. But thanks for the question. Good one.
Right. I'm seeing Tanya Galis. Tanya, I'm going to promote you to panelist if you want to say your name, address, and question, please.
Hi, Tanya Galis, sixty two Prescott Road. Alice, thank you for the presentation. I have one question about I I'm sorry, I cannot start my video. I'm not dressed for it. I have, I have, I have one question about the sources of the electrical energy. One of them being the offshore wind. And I know that there are certain natural preservation oriented organizations and climate change interested or, you know, resistant organizations such as the Center for Biological Diversity also have concerns about more more studies needed about offshore wind in terms of protecting ocean life and and birds habitats and flying patterns, et cetera. So I'm wondering if this is being taken into consideration because there is a lot of an industry of offshore wind and investment opportunities on offshore wind, which is ultimately beneficial, but is it being rushed too much? Thank you very much. And I'm sorry, Linda, for raising my voice earlier because I didn't realize that you just hadn't heard my question yet. Thank you.
Alice.
Well, thank you, Tanya, for the question. So that's a really good question. It's about, you know, the trade offs that we make every day about renewable energies and what sources of renewable energies or non emitting sources of power are would be acceptable in for Concord to purchase into. And the light plant, the light board has talked about holding a public information outreach session to hear what people's interests are. Because as we move forward to move away from the purchase of REX to trying to buy all non emitting sources, some of those conflicts come up in our needs and our desires for how to live a perfect life. So we'd like to hear from the citizens. One of the comments I think we heard from Terry, the Select Board Member, Terry Ackerman, was a concern about the purchase of non emitting nuclear energy into the to Concord's portfolio. And thought that that was a really good question to bring to the community and have a forum discussion about what's acceptable for Concord to have in its power mix in order to be non emitting.
Thank you, Alice. Okay, any other questions? All right. Thank you very much for representing the committee today, even though it's not your committee. We'll move on to the citizen petition articles. And Chris, is there a slide on this or?
No, the slides were included in the first slide deck.
Okay, so I'll just comment that Article forty three was one of the citizen petition articles from last year that we were, we recently sought clarification to see if they were coming forward this year. And at this time, that particular article is going to remain in committee because they felt the Planning Board had made some changes to the PRD that they're waiting to see how they actually are implemented and that this is a pandemic year, which is they needed more time to to see the implementation of those changes. Article forty eight was also postponed from last year, and that was a historic districts commission nominating organization reference. And that petitioner has also been contacted and feels that this time it can be postponed to another year. So that's the update on the citizen petition articles. Are there any other citizen petition articles by that need to be represented today by someone who's here that we are not aware of? If not, I'll remind everyone that the deadline for submitting citizen petitions is March twenty sixth at four P M, as that is the outside deadline for the warrant being closed. So at this time, are there any additional public comments? Thank everyone who's participated in the questioning earlier today. All right. I'll just.
Linda, we are, we are seeing one public comment. Tanya, I'm going to go ahead and elevate you if you want to say your name and address and your question, please.
Mark here on mute.
Thank you very much. Sorry. Mark Galis, sixty two Prescott Road. Just wanted to take this opportunity to add a public comment related to the change in the personnel committee, committee Personnel Board. It seems to me this is a very, very, very large step because what we're doing essentially is having the Personnel Board ask for itself to be self destructed and self destruct and change from something with an active role in personnel to something that merely will provide advice to the town manager when he or she wants it. And that could be gotten without having such a board. So the town charter requires the Select Board to appoint a Personnel Board. The current Personnel Bylaw is seventeen pages long with twenty sections. This is less than one page with four sections. Among the things that would be eliminated would be in section five point one, five point three, six point two, classification, employee classification plan, changes, additions of titles, changes to titles, additions to titles and amendments need to be approved by town meeting. So this is a very, very dramatic bylaw change, and I think all of that needs to be disclosed to the public so that they know they are not simply, you know, making a tiny change. They're making a very, very dramatic change in government that even goes back to whether the town charter ought to be reconfigured. The town charter does give the town manager a lot of authority in personnel. So, you know, adjustments might need to be made, but I think this is kind of like chopping down the tree in order to deal with a couple of, you know, dead branches or inconveniences. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment.
All right. I'm seeing Brooks Reed. Brooks, I'm going to go ahead and elevate you if you want to say your name, your address, your question, please.
Okay. Brooks Reed, three six six Estherbrook Road. Last year's town meeting included warrant article nine, which was introduced to allow taxpayers to decide if they wanted to fund persistent legal services fund overruns. I saw information in a recent Select Board document packet which indicates the town is on track to once again overspend the legal services fund. Despite numerous assurances early in the year that the legal services fund was sufficient this fiscal year. My question is, is there a plan to have a warrant article similar to last year's Article nine in this year's town meeting? My question is, is there a plan to have a warrant article similar to last year's Article nine in this year's town meeting?
Chris, I don't believe we've had any submitted to that effect.
Right.
Year to date.
Linda, I can, I can answer that. We're not sure yet. That's part of the budget process and monitoring the year-end. FY 21 year-end performance.
Great. Thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you for your comment. All right. Jeremy, are you seeing any other questions?
Matt has, has most asked question.
Yeah. So Matt Johnson, member of the select board, but speaking on my own behalf, since the select board has not yet had a chance to deliberate on this point. But this, just for Carmen's benefit, the select board may decide to bring forward a affordable housing funding article to town meeting. We do have a discussion scheduled at an upcoming meeting. And so I just wanted to note for the town that that might be one additional item that could come before town meeting depending upon the financial opportunity that we have to fund it.
Okay, thank you, Matt. Any other comments? From the public? Okay, I will conclude by mentioning that the first public hearing for this will begin with a select board public hearing on April 27th. And the other public hearings then follow. We've already noted that the warrant closes on March 26 at 4:00 PM. However, draft of warrant articles, if at all possible, are due to the town manager's office by March 19th. So with that, I'm going to thank everyone for your patience with this first virtual preliminary warrant article review meeting. We've, you know, it is a little difficult with the delays between questions and so forth, but I think we managed it as well as we can. And I want to thank all the staff who worked in preparation for today's meeting and presentations. So thank you, everyone. And I would now entertain a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Escapero.
Aye.
Mr. Johnson.
Aye.
Ms. Hotchkiss.
Aye.
Ms. Ackerman.
Aye.
And myself, Ms. Bates. Aye.
That's definitely unanimous. Enjoy the rest of the day, everyone. Thank you.